Okay, we are on the air in the December 17th, 2018 City Council Meeting of the full Seattle City Council will come to order. It's 2:03 PM. I'm Bruce Harrell, President of the Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Here.
Bagshaw.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Herbold.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Juarez.
Here.
President Harrell.
Here.
Seven present.
Very good. At this point, I would like to move, I'd like to make a motion to rescind Councilmember Juarez's absence from today's meetings, which will allow her to participate and vote at today's meeting. It's moved in second to rescind Councilmember Juarez's absence. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and she can participate in today's vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did want to say one point about that motion. Now, it's been moved in second, and perhaps I should have said before, but just for the viewing public, that our council rules are basically silent on providing council members an option to participate and vote by electronic means at city council meetings. And due to the requirements, at one of the items that we'll pass today or vote on today, I don't know if it's going to pass or not, I should say, we'll vote on today, it does require a three-fourths vote for it to pass. And due to the absence, excused absence of three council members from today's city council meeting, Councilmember Juarez's, and she was also excused for some very valid reasons, we allowed her to participate by conference call in order to consider the legislation in front of us. And so that's what that was about. Okay, bear with me just one moment. If there's no objection to today's introduction and referral calendar, it will be adopted. I don't believe there are any objections or amendments, so hearing no objection to today's introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. If there's no objection to today's agenda, it will be adopted. Hearing no objection to today's agenda, it will be adopted. There are no minutes presented for approval to date, so we'll move on to public comment. At this time, we'll take public comment on items that appear on today's agenda, or our introduction and referral calendar, or our city council's 2018 work program. We have three people that have signed up. Thank you. I'll call you out in the order that you've signed up. We'll start off with Mr. Alex Zimmerman, followed by Tyrone Kenny, and then Ms. Yvette Kenny. Alex Zimmerman, you are first, sir.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to Mr. Tyrone Kenny, and then Ms. Kenny.
How y'all doing today? I come to speak on the homeless, you know. We really don't did a lot of different damage to them, you know. And so I was speaking on some guy, I met a guy, and I'm trying to help him out. And one guy damaged with his kid is in the homeless area. And we need to try to do something for that, you know. And but I'm gonna do all I can do because our nonprofit with God is. And you know, we're trying to help people out and put them in a home also. And we, you know, we, I don't know what the city is really, really trying to do for the homeless and really, because you know, some people got a mental issue, and then they got a kid with them with a mental issue, that's sort of real sad. And then the mom don't want to help the kid too. And that's sort of foul, and I'm really, really trying to figure out what Seattle gonna do about the homeless. How can we really truly help them and, you know, stop running them off the areas and find a place to put them in before we run wasting money again? We wasting money again. When we move them and we let them stay in a spot so long, and then they get so bad and get hazard with their waste and food and different things they leave behind, needles and stuff, and you have a kid out there in that. That's kind of sad of Seattle not to take care of that. You know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker will be Ms. Yvette Kenny.
Good afternoon and happy holidays, all. First of all, I want to approve one of the items on the agenda. It's for Gian Nicola Rosario for the Seattle Youth Commission. We know him personally from Raino High School, and you couldn't ask for a better representative on Youth Commission. He's a wonderful kid. Also, I want to thank Councilmember Gonzalez, Esquire. She came to, because you're an attorney. She came to, I think it was the second to last session of the People's Academy for Community Engagement Class that I completed. And she gave us tips on how to interact with the Seattle Council, real good tips. I wish I would have been taking notes because I learned something from that excellent class. We appreciate that. Also, somewhat enlightening is that she gave us some statistics on the homeless situation. And actually, there's been some forward movement. There happened to be people house, and that doesn't get a whole lot of press, but that was encouraging to me. So there is forward progress, and we need more, of course, such as there's 4,280-plus Seattle Public Schools students that are homeless. So I'd like to see that have some greater strides as far as addressing that issue. I'm also, regarding the homeless situation, it's particularly problematic along Raino Avenue, which is the route we travel quite often. It's distressing, not that they're camping, but the trash is just disgusting. So if you could at least find some way to have regular trash picks ups on these homeless and cabins, I think it'd be a lot more palpable to some of us that are concerned about that. And also, you know, there's still that big hole in the wall down there, which used to be the Public Safety Building. I don't know what's going on with that, but I'd like to see some kind of feedback on where that's at, because we know there's a glut of new apartments now, so maybe the developers are more willing to build affordable housing there on that. And then lastly, what's the final 4-1-1 on the pronto bikes? Once that was, we quit doing that, just kind of curious how can find out. The pronto bikes, you know, the bikes we had? What happened?
What was the question? I didn't understand.
What happened to that? I know they were taken off the streets and in storage, but are they still in storage?
Pronto bikes.
The pronto bikes. Are they still in storage, or we don't know?
No, that contract was canceled.
Which I know, so I don't know what happened to the bikes, though. We don't know. That's why I was asking. I'm just curious.
They're sold.
If we can find answers to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenny. That will conclude our public comment session.
Oh, man, he makes me crazy.
Let's move to the first committee report.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Payroll bills?
I'm sorry. I probably.
I'm gonna pay the bills. Why do you say anything? What's that about?
That's the second time he's done that. I'm just happy.
What are you asking me?
Payroll bills.
So...
Weird.
Please read the title of, I guess we have two payment bills, so please read both titles.
Council Bill 119432 and Council Bill 119433, Ordinances Appropriating Money to Pay Certain Audited Claims and Ordering the Payment Thereof and Ratifying and, oh, excuse me, to Pay Certain Audited Claims and Ordering the Payment Thereof.
Actually, we have two payment bills, so I'll take them individually. I will move to pass Council Bill 119432.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please call the roll on the passage of the first bill.
O'Brien. Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Bill passes, and the chair will sign it. I move to pass Council Bill 119433.
Second.
Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Now, let's move to the first committee report.
The Report of the Finance and Neighborhoods Committee. Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 119430, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 125493, which amended the 2018 budget, including the 2018 to 2023 capital improvement program. The committee recommends a city council pass as amended the council bill.
Great.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to bring you the fourth quarter supplemental budget. This is an ordinance that provides expenditure authority for us to use the grants that we have accepted and for other budget revisions that are requested by various departments. The net operation appropriations increase in this quarter is approximately 85.5 million, of which 18 million is of general fund. The amount's about $12 million, is backed by four new grants, and about $788,000 is backed by reimbursement for other new revenues. And in addition to providing appropriations for previously described grant-funded projects, the bill would authorize increased operation appropriations totaling $39.7 million. I know you guys were all excited about that.
Okay. Is that all you'd like to say?
That's all I'd like to say. I have 100 pages more, if you'd like that, but I thought you'd appreciate just the summary.
We appreciate it. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Herbold.
I just want to make note of one of the projects in the first quarter supplemental, or third quarter, fourth quarter supplemental, is the Duamish Waterway Park Improvements. And this is something that came up a couple months ago because of anticipated funding from the Parks Department not coming through of about $100,000. This is a grant accept, well, later on, we'll be talking about a grant acceptance associated with this inclusion in the fourth quarter supplemental. But I also wanted to just make note, because of the concern a couple months ago about not receiving the Parks Fund funding, that we looked into this and found that the $950,000 associated with this project does not require a match from the Parks Department. So a lot of people were nervous that not getting the funds from the department was going to slow up this project and have an impact on our ability to accept these grant funds.
Thanks for making that point. Thank you, Councilmember Herbold.
Councilmember Herbold, was there any further follow-up action you needed from Parks or from another department to make sure that?
Thanks for checking about that. I know that the Parks Department and some other departments are continuing to work to fully fund the budget associated with this project, and I'm confident that that will happen. My main concern was that we might, I was, people were worried that we may not be able to accept this funding without the funding from the Parks Department. I've determined that's not the case. So I'm just, I'm speaking to this aloud, in case there are folks listening, so that they can, they can have that reassurance that they can continue to work with the city for the rest of the funding.
Nice.
Very good. Okay, if no further comments, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed.
Bill passes, and the chair will sign it. So at this point, I would excuse Councilmember Juarez from the remainder of today's meeting. So I'll make a formal motion that we excuse Councilmember Juarez for the remainder of today's meetings. Is there a second? Any comments? All those in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilmember Juarez, you are officially excused. Thank you for participating.
I think I'm just gonna sit here and watch you guys on TV. It's kind of fun.
Okay, you can do that. You just can't vote anymore.
Thank you.
Can't vote anymore. Okay, please call the next agenda item.
Agenda Item 2, Council Bill 119421, An Ordinance Relating to City Employment, commonly referred to as the Fourth Quarter 2018 Employment Ordinance. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you. This is another one of those items that comes before us regularly. This time, we're designating nine positions as exempt from the civil service system. A number of those positions have already been filled, multiples in our OSB we talked about during budget. The Human Resources Department, a couple of the strategic advisors are already filled, and we recommend you pass.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Six in favor, none opposed.
The bill passes, and the chair will sign it. Please read Agenda Item Number 3. You can shorten the title if you'd like.
Agenda Item 3, Council Bill 119425, An Ordinance Authorizing in 2018 Acceptance of Funding from Non-City Sources. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Okay, Councilmember Bagshaw. Do you believe we'll have an amendment at some point? But you could describe the base.
Yes, we do, and I will look forward to talking about that and try to address it a little bit before we get there. So this fourth grant acceptance ordinance authorizes our city departments to accept 45 grants that total approximately $12 million from external sources to support a range of purposes, as well as a $25 million loan for Seattle Public Utilities Ship Canal Water Quality Projects. We have in our materials in front of us a long list of those grants and the various loans. There's also one item here that was a concern to the committee, and we reached out to Councilmember Gonzalez's office. This is a grant from ICE, from the Immigrations and Customs Enforcement. All of us sort of sat up straight when we saw this. What it is, is a reimbursement to Seattle Police Department. Again, it's a reimbursement for overtime that's associated with investigations related to narcotics, money, and other contraband at ports and borders. There is no nexus in this grant to immigration. It is a pass-through. When I asked further questions from CBO, our Budget Office, the majority of reimbursable hours for the Homeland Security Investigations Task Force were spent on narcotics-related criminal investigations. SPD's coordination and cooperation with this task force is limited to the investigation of criminal activities and never involves immigration enforcement. All task force activities are conducted in compliance with SPD Policy 6.020, which says that SPD employees will not initiate, maintain, or participate in any police action based on the individual's immigration status. So I want to say thank you to central staff and thank you to our Budget Office for confirming that. And with that, I'm going to entertain the amendment, I believe.
Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. I would like to propose an amendment that does two items. The first is related to what I raised as a concern in council briefings this morning, and that's an amendment to make clear that in the Loman Beach seawall removal project that the city will consider potential mitigation measures associated with concerns about impacts about the removal of the city's seawall and whether or not that might impact the condition of the private seawalls abutting the city's seawall. The second item was identified this morning completely unrelated to that issue. It's just a small technical error correcting a reference to the fourth quarter supplemental in the bill.
There's a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, so any questions on the, basically, substitute version? Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. No question, I just want to remark that I'm going to vote in favor of this amendment, but I will, I intend to vote no on the underlying bill. And before we call the underlying bill up for vote, I'd like to have an opportunity to say why.
Very good. Okay, so we have an amendment in front of us right now, which is basically substituting version 2 for version D1C, as my notes would suggest. Okay, any questions on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So now we have an amended piece of base legislation. Do you want to speak to it? Councilmember Bagshaw? Or?
No, I'm finished. It's something that we just need to move forward with to accept these grants, but I respect that Councilmember Gonzalez has something she'd like to say.
Very good. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. I will make this really quick. It's very rare that I would vote no to reject money that is coming to us, but I feel really strongly that I can't vote in favor of accepting a grant from ICE, which is the overarching agency that does engage in immigration enforcement, that leads to the incarceration and detention and inhumane practice of deporting and separating families in our country. And while I recognize that there are values added in terms of Homeland Security Investigations Unit to the issues related to public safety that are really important, I think that I still continue to have a lot of concerns about how HSI bleeds into some areas of immigration enforcement. And in fact, if you go to their webpage and look at their different divisions that they have, one includes a description of what is referred to as the Joint Intelligence Operations Center, which again is housed under HSI and is part of the overarching work of this particular division of ICE that squarely focuses on, quote, "partnering with ICE to vigilantly enforce the nation's immigration and custom laws," given my very strong position on continuing to be a welcoming city and on my ongoing concerns that while I recognize that SPD feels that they need to partner in limited circumstances with HSI, I cannot support ongoing partnership until I know more about the full breadth of how our department engages with HSI. And I've continued to have questions about that now, and have had questions about that partnership in the past, and just cannot accept, can't vote yes in favor of these particular, this particular grant.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 119425 as amended.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
No.
Herbold.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Three in favor, two opposed. Or four in favor, two opposed.
So the bill passes.
It fails.
The bill fails. And the chair will not sign.
Folks.
So, okay.
So how many nos? How many yeses?
Two.
Sure, that's not a majority.
Deborah? Get Deborah on the phone.
Well, is there a way to amend the bill to strip out that one thing and consider that at a later date?
Yep.
So what I'll have to do is not do anything on the fly, and we'll move to the next agenda item, and we'll figure out what our...
[inaudible]
Okay, so I can make a motion to reconsider. Okay. So I've been told by the clerk, thank you for that, that I can make a motion to reconsider it on a date certain, and that date certain will be January 7th. And if the motion passes, the bill still failed today, but we have the right to reconsider it on the 7th. Okay, so I'll make the motion, and I'll explain it again.
Can we just talk about that other option that was mentioned, rather than just bringing it back? Bringing it back without?
Okay. Councilmember Juarez?
No, bringing it back without that grant acceptance.
So I was half-listening to that, since I was blindsided up there. So what was the other suggestion that I didn't catch?
Amending the legislation.
Oh, amending the legislation, just to pull out the, that was like $95,000 or something like that. Let's see, the bill failed, so I'll ask the clerk, can we, the bill failed, how do I amend a failed bill?
The prevailing folks would have to move to reconsider, and then we'd have to amend...
So we could reconsider it today?
Yeah. Do we have time to have law, for central staff to rewrite the bill?
That's one of the issues. Will we have time to go through the legal process as we would for any amendment?
[inaudible]
Okay, very good. Boy, you're on your A-game today, Jody. So we're gonna, what we could do is move to reconsider to the end of today's agenda, and perhaps law can give us some input on whether we can pull that piece out. It's as simple as that, so.
Well, we also, we also have a couple...
Lots of active listeners back there.
Well, that's not the same, that's not the process, okay, so let's...
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, you may.
Does the removal of this particular grant impact the title of the bill as introduced?
I don't know. I haven't read the bill in total.
I don't know either, but I would think not, but...
Well, I, let me...
Why are you asking me? What's the point?
Well, because the title includes a reference to grants being accepted by the Seattle Police Department. If this is the only grant being accepted by the Seattle Police Department, then that would be a bill title change.
So...
And could not be reconsidered. An amended version of it could not be reconsidered today.
We do have other grants by the Seattle Police Department that are being, that are included in this. So there's one, two, three.
Can you talk into the microphone so the audience understands?
So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. We've got nine grants, so that if we remove the $90,000 from the Police Department, there still would be eight that would be included for the Police Department.
Council President?
Yes.
I would maybe suggest we suspend the rules and let central staff come to the microphone just to give us some clarity for a second, and then that'll help us decide what our options...
Clarity on what, Councilmember O'Brien?
To your question about, could we amend the bill today to remove that? Both the technical question and is there simply enough time to do that, or do we need to put it off?
I don't know if that's something central staff can answer.
That was my point area, but that's fine. Why don't we, why don't we suspend the rules, just get a little input, and if there's, if you are, I'm going to move to suspend the rules to here unless there's any objection. If you, come to the mic if you don't mind. And if you still need some time, that would help us. Perhaps we would consider this motion reconsidered toward the end of the meeting, so go ahead. And always identify yourself. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eric Sund of your council central staff, adjusting to my new location. So there are other grants, as indicated, that are being awarded or would be approved in this ordinance. The removal of the one item is something that technically I believe we could accomplish within a relatively short timeframe. I don't know exactly how long you expect the remainder of the meeting's business to take, but I, if there's interest on the part of the council, I will go and begin working on a different version. It's a matter of omission, which is easier than a matter of addition.
Well, okay. Any other questions? So what we'll try to do, I'm going to suggest a motion to reconsider by the end of the meeting. If we are not finished, and I'll look at what our options are, whether we'll consider it another day. I don't know if it's so time-sensitive we can't do it in January, I just don't know on the acceptance funds. Perhaps it is?
I would just say that the Budget Office has suggested that we need this money to spend before the end of the year from grants, and I would recommend that we move forward and to the extent that we can just withdraw that $90,000 grant.
It wasn't a suggestion we don't do that.
Okay.
I was just suggesting that if we don't have it finished by the end of this agenda, we just can't sit here and look at each other for 20 minutes. And so I was going to say, let's revisit it then, and perhaps you could find the, my guess would be dealing with the federal government, that two or three weeks isn't going to make a huge amount of difference. But just clarified, if we have to do it today...
They might be closed, for all we know.
I just want to, the, this, the particular funding that I'm taking issue with, that is a grant from HSI, that's a reimbursement. Those dollars have already been spent, but I think that council members have expressed concern about either spending or reimbursement of the other items that are listed in the summary that are attached to the council bill, which again, I don't oppose those other grant acceptances, I just have issue with this one.
So...
So, if I may, what I believe Councilmember Bagshaw was speaking to is that, you know, there are a number of appropriations in the supplemental ordinance that you just acted on that are backed by other grants. And so to the, I think the question is not necessarily so much of the amount of time that is available to the city and to the council to approve the acceptance of the grants eventually, but the appropriations that are in the fourth quarter supplemental that are backed by those grants are contingent upon the acceptance of the grants. And so what would be, the issue potentially is not having those appropriations for the for the 2018 budget in 2018 on the other items.
I don't understand what you just said.
Actually, I do, and so if I can try this one more time, that we have a supplemental budget, and the reason why Councilmember Juarez, and again, thank you Councilmember Juarez for voting with us on that, was that we had to be able to pass that out today to be able to make payments before the end of 2018, and the grants will assist us in making those payments. Some is general fund, and some were backed by these grants, so if we can today, take out, exclude 1.37, which is the reimbursement for the Police Department, and be able to remove that, and then vote for all of the other grants, that would be much appreciated by our CBO and the Mayor's Office in particular, who have signed these bills.
Well spoken.
Well, at the risk of, the, how much money is that, $90,000?
It's $90,000.
I'll just run, exactly, of the $90,000 that may very well not be approved by our action today, are we keeping alive the possibility to still get it through our actions if we reconsider it? Because while I respect Councilmember Gonzalez's principled position on this, I may not share it if it's reimbursement for monies of work we've already done, so I wanna make sure that at least we could preserve, I could preserve my argument to get that reimbursement, because that $90,000 is gonna have to come from somewhere, and it may just cut into some other central services.
So, the appropriations, the grant-backed appropriations in the supplemental are contingent upon the acceptance of the grants, and so, that's the first issue, but the approval, approving some of the grants and being silent on another grant would not in and of itself constitute a rejection of that one grant. Now, I don't know enough about the background on that particular $90,000 grant to know what time, by when it must be, its acceptance must be approved, there may be more time to accept that, but approving the receipt of the other grant monies would not affect that question.
Okay, let me just, just one minute. There was one suggestion that got lost in the shuffle, but adding Councilmember Juarez is on here, and I'm just gonna see from a practical standpoint whether she's still following the information, and, Councilmember Juarez, are you still on the line?
I like the ID.
She is not, so I think I lost that possibility as well. Okay, just wanted someone that made that suggestion, so. So, okay, so let's do this. I'm gonna make a motion that we reconsider Council Bill 119425 as amended, reconsider it at the end of today's agenda during the adoption of other legislation section.
Great, second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, so we will reconsider to end of today's agenda.
President Harrell?
Yes.
We are reconsidering it at the end of today's agenda for the purposes of amending it, or proposing an amendment to remove the $95,000, or having a vote with an additional council member on the existing legislation?
Good question, both. That's why I stated, what I was going to do during the other members was also see whether Councilmember Juarez could be available, and also see whether we can just take that out, because what if they come back and say, you just can't take it out? I don't know, so I made it vague to reconsider, to pursue all options. We're just reconsidering it, so.
We've got something here, where are you going?
Well, let's, can we just stay on course of action here? So, let's...
Council President?
Yes.
I appreciate that clarity, and I appreciate the question, Council, sorry.
The grant acceptance ordinance does not require a supermajority, unlike the supplemental, that was all I wanted to point out.
But it requires a majority, and she would have been five, so I didn't suggest we need, we had 4 to 2, so it would be 5 to, if she voted in favor, it could be 4 to 3 for all I know, I don't know.
We may be idiots.
I'm sorry?
The reconsideration will be here for the reconsideration.
Okay, very good. So, okay, so...
So, Council President?
Councilmember O'Brien?
I appreciate flexibility with this, and I appreciate the move to reconsider. There would need to be a vote again to add another council member who's not present, I believe, and so I think that's an open discussion for me. I'm a little uncomfortable with us moving back and forth here on this, and so I...
Well, I'm uncomfortable with not having this during the briefing discussion, where we could have prepared our agenda a little better.
Understood.
I mean, I, to be fair, I did advise Councilmember Bagshaw's office this morning that I was gonna have this position, so, I, but that's just my, my one vote.
Okay, that's probably not possible, well, not knowing the possibilities, I tried to preserve all the possibilities, so that looks like Councilmember Juarez may not be available anyway. Okay, that's a lot of fun, so let me just be clear what we're trying to do. We are going to move on with the agenda. At the end of our agenda, we will revisit Council Bill 119425 as amended. We may not vote on it, we may vote on it, but we'll just have it, we'll decide at that point, but we've preserved our right to make that decision at the end. Okay, so let's move on to Agenda Item Number 4.
Okay.
Agenda Item 4, Council Bill 119429, an ordinance relating to fees charged by the Seattle Animal Shelter and amending Chapter 9.26 of the Seattle Municipal Code to make technical corrections. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Bagshaw?
You will not believe how easy this is compared to the last one. The legislation makes technical corrections to the 2019 budget that we passed last month, and will make penalties consistent across all species, dog, cat, miniature pig, pot-bellied pig, and round the cat license fees up to $26 instead of down to $25, and make the gold flash card discount consistent 50% off rather than rounded to the nearest dollar.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any comments? All right, please call the roll on the passage of Council Bill 119429.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Bagshaw?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
President Harrell?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
Very good. The bill passed, and Chair will sign it. Finally, something is signed. Okay, please read, please read the next agenda item.
Agenda Item 5, Council Bill 119414, an ordinance relating to historic preservation, imposing controls upon the University of Washington Canoe House, ASU dep Shell House, a landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board under Chapter 25.12 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and adding it to the table of historical landmarks contained in Chapter 25.32 of the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Bagshaw?
Thank you very much. So, the University of Washington Canoe House, also known as the ASUW Shell House, built in 1918. The original building was part of the naval training station on the UW campus during World War I, and it later served as the Shell House for the UW rowing from 1918, where it was used in tail 1950 to house the UW's powerhouse and Olympic gold medal-winning rowing team, 1948 London Olympics. I am very pleased to be able to nominate this, and as many of you know, the book Boys in the Boat has an opportunity once again to be filmed here at the University of Washington, and having the Shell House in that area as part of the movie is something I hope we can accomplish, so we recommend moving forward with this landmark designation.
Very good. Any questions on the council bill? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Bagshaw?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
President Harrell?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
Bill passes, and the Chair will sign it. Please read the next agenda item. The full agenda item, slowly.
Agenda Item 6, Council Bill 119418, an ordinance relating to historic preservation, imposing controls upon the Japanese Language School, a landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board under Chapter 25.12 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and adding it to the table of historical landmarks contained in Chapter 25.32 of the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Bagshaw?
Thank you. The Japanese Language School is located at South Weller Street, just off Rainier. The three buildings of the school were built between 1912 and 1929, and the neighborhood was historically a residential area for the Seattle's immigrant and Japanese-American population from 1900 through the end of World War II. It currently houses the Japanese Cultural and Community Center of Washington, and this is recommended to have the historic landmark status applied to it because of its status in the community and just the location and the significant manner in which it has contributed to the community.
Any questions or comments? I'll make one comment, that is, during the discussion of the committee table, I thanked the presenters and the Japanese Language School for doing such a fascinating historical write-up on both why the school was founded, the decades of work that were put into it, the role it played before and after internment, and again, it was just a fascinating read and a body of work that the community put together, and look forward to supporting this.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for mentioning that. It was just especially well-written, we commented at the table, and appreciated all of the investment of time and energy in it.
If no comments, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Bagshaw?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
President Harrell?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes, and Chair will sign it. Please read Agenda Item Number 7.
Agenda Item Number 7, Council Bill 119422, an ordinance relating to historic preservation, imposing controls upon the Idris Nurses Home, a landmark designated by the Landmarks Preservation Board under Chapter 25.12 of the Seattle Municipal Code, and adding it to the table of historical landmarks contained in Chapter 25.32 of the Seattle Municipal Code. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
One moment, please, we're getting something...
Bagshaw?
Okay, very good, thank you. So, this is a beautiful building up on Queen Anne, it was built in 1923, the property first housed the Nurses Home from the Children's Orthopedic Hospital. Hospital was founded in 1907 by the Women's Hospital Association to provide medical care to children regardless of their ability to pay. This is a building that is still being used, I believe it's housing the American Cancer Society since the 1980s, and we recommend that this be added to the landmark status.
Very good. Any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Bagshaw?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
President Harrell?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes, and the Chair will sign it. Please read Agenda Items 8 through 17.
Agenda Items 8 through 17, appointments 1201 through 1208, and appointments 1115 and 1116. The appointments of Abdouweli Ali, Wanika Hops, and Jordan Howard as members, Seattle Youth Commission for terms to August 31, 2019, and the appointments of Rosie Allen, Madison Jackson Height, Linda Phan, Jan Nicolo Rosario, Chloe Rubin, Henry Irving Engel, and Catherine Kang as members, Seattle Youth Commission for terms to August 31, 2020. The committee recommends the appointments be confirmed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bagshaw?
I would like to recognize all of these individuals that came and joined us at our table on Wednesday, and I'd like to say their names in just a sentence about each of them. They're such impressive young people. Abdouweli Abdi, a 12th grader at Franklin, he was one of the youth members at the Rainier Beach Community Center that helped us in our recent search for the Chief of Police. Wenjuko Hops, she's an 11th grader at Seattle Prep, passionate about inclusion of special ed students in the community, she has an autistic older brother, and is working hard in diversity of higher-level athletics as well. Jordan Howard is a 9th grader at Alexander Hamilton International Middle School, passionate about many things, but he was very interested in homelessness and mentorship for young men. Rosie Allen, a 10th grader at Roosevelt High School, born in Guatemala, came to the US as an infant and is passionate about making Seattle more inclusive. Madison Jackson Height, a 10th grader at Ballard High School, working with women's and immigrants' rights, and she's proud to have two moms, Muslim cousins, and Venezuela half-sisters. Linda Phan, 11th grader at Garfield High School, she's worked on amplifying voices of underrepresented communities, and is a major advocate for social justice and education. Jan Nicolo Rosario, he's a 12th grader at Rainier Beach High School, passionate about homelessness again, and he worked on the free ORCA card for students. Chloe Rubin, an 11th grader at Seattle Academy of Arts and Science, and she's been working on gun responsibility, and I appreciated very much the work that she's done there, and she's also a teen ambassador for One Love, a national organization that leads to educating young people about healthy and unhealthy relationships. Henry Irving Engel is an 8th grader at Denny International Middle School, working on homelessness, racial equity, and gun violence. Catherine Kang, an 8th grader at University Prep, also passionate about advocacy and bully-free communities. I really recommend all of these students to you, and recommend their part of the new Youth Commission, and would like to move forward with that today.
Very good. Any questions or comments? I'd like to give a shout-out to the Department of Neighborhoods, Mr. Montilla, and Leslie Daniels, the coordinator, for being very intentional about their efforts in diversity. I've had many conversations with Ms. Daniels, and applaud them on their efforts of achieving these young superstars for this Seattle Youth Commission, so look forward to supporting it.
Great.
Okay, all those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and the appointments are confirmed. Okay, let's go to next committee report.
The Report of the Civil Rights Utilities Economic Development and Arts Committee, Council Bill 119412, an ordinance relating to Seattle Public Utilities, accepting easements granted to the City of Seattle for installation, operation, and maintenance of hydrants, water mains, domestic meter vaults, fire service meters, and appurtenances necessary for water utility purposes at various locations in Seattle, placing the property rights and interests conveyed by the local easements under the jurisdiction of Seattle Public Utilities, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you, I'm enjoying how slowly we're all talking. So, the first bill, Council Bill 119412, accepts easements granted to the City of Seattle for installation, operation, maintenance of hydrants, water mains, domestic meter vaults, fire service meters, and other appurtenances necessary for water utility purposes at various locations throughout Seattle, and the legislation itself does not have a fiscal impact, it is no cost to the city, and so with that, I'll move passage of Council Bill 119412.
Second.
Very good. Any questions or comments on this bill? If not, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Bagshaw?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
President Harrell?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
The bill passed, and Chair will sign it.
Council Bill 119419?
Let's have it read into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you read the both into the record together, my apologies.
Please read Agenda Item Number 19 into the record. And let me, the bill passed, and Chair will sign it, please read Agenda, right, 19 in the record. My rhythm's off today.
Agenda Item 19, Council Bill 119419, an ordinance relating to Seattle Public Utilities, declaring certain real property rights relating to sewer and storm drain easements within Seattle as being surplus to city utility needs, authorizing the Director of the Seattle Public Utilities to relinquish such easement rights and to accept new easements, placing the real property rights and interests conveyed by the easements under the jurisdiction of Seattle Public Utilities, and ratifying and confirming certain prior acts. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. So, Council Bill 119419 authorizes Seattle Public Utilities to relinquish five drainage utility easements and accept five easements, again, at no cost to the city, to operate SPU facilities such as storm sewers, or sewer lines, within private property, the city requires easements for access, operations, and maintenance. With that, if there are no further questions, I move Council Bill 119419.
Second.
Okay, I think that our Council President is coming back.
Okay.
To call the roll?
Any comments or concerns? We're ready to vote. Okay, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Bagshaw?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
President Harrell?
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes, and the Chair will sign it. So, please read Agenda Items 20, Agenda Item Number 20.
Agenda Item 20, Appointment 1173, the appointment of Dia Kana as member, Seattle Women's Commission for a term to July 1, 2020. The committee recommends the appointment be confirmed.
Councilmember Herbold?
Thank you. Dia is a commission appointment, which means that the appointing authority is the Seattle Women's Commission itself. The appointment is a person who has diversity and inclusion expertise and experience establishing equity practices and policies, and is also a reporter with Seattle Times. The, so we're gonna just do the Women's Commission first, and then move on?
Yeah, we're doing it by commission, so we'll take the next ones in a row. Any comments on this appointment? Those in favor of confirming the appointment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, and the appointment is confirmed. Please read Agenda Items 21 through 25.
Agenda Items 21 through 25, appointments 1107, 1189 through 1191, and appointment 1193, the appointments of Sarah Hillman as member, Seattle Human Rights Commission for a term to January 22, 2019, and the appointments of Tyrone Grandison and Derek Stephen Lum as members, Seattle Human Rights Commission for terms to July 20... as Members, Seattle Human Rights Commission for Terms to July 22, 2019. The Appointment of Erica Chen as Member, Seattle Human Rights Commission for a Term to July 22, 2020, and the Reappointment of Shokim Kalemde as Member for a Term to January 22, 2020, Seattle Human Rights Commission. The committee recommends the appointments be confirmed.
Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. Sarah Hillman is a mayoral appointment, is the Assistant Attorney General in Washington State Attorney General's Office, and specifically within the Social and Health Services Division. She's worked for National Public Radio, CBS, and ABC News. Tyrone Grandison is a council appointment. Tyrone is the Chief Information Officer for the Institute for Health Metrics and Evaluations, and has previously served as Deputy Chief Data Officer in the U.S. Department of Commerce and as a White House Presidential Innovation Fellow. Derek Stephen Lum is a mayoral appointment, as well as a community organizer with the Asian Pacific Islander Americans for Civic Empowerment, has been a social justice intern with New Beginnings, as well as an outreach officer at Amnesty International and an Associate Director of Invest in Youth. Erica Chen is a mayoral appointment, works for Rainier Scholars, and is focused on addressing education inequities. And then finally, Shokim Kalemde is a mayoral appointment and acts as a manager of strategic planning and development at Seattle Housing Authority, and is also acting as the co-chair as a reappointment, acting as a co-chair of the Seattle Human Rights Commission and member of the Commission's Race and Gender Equity Task Force.
All right. Any comments or concerns on these appointments? Okay, those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. Okay, please read the next agenda item.
The Report of the Gender Equity Safe Communities New Americans and Education Committee, Agenda Item 26, Council Bill 119431, An Ordinance Relating to the Seattle Fire Department: Authorizing the Fire Chief to Execute and Administer for and on behalf of the City of Seattle an interlocal agreement with 29 agencies that operate independent fire departments within King County to provide one another with automatic emergency response services under certain circumstances. The committee recommends the bill pass.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance authorizes the Fire Chief for the Seattle Fire Department to execute and administer an interlocal agreement with 29 agencies operating independent fire departments within King County. This ILA allows the individual fire departments listed in the agreement to provide each other with fire, rescue, and emergency services during emergent situations when those jurisdictions are stretched beyond their capacity. One example of this situation occurred on November 10, 2018, when there was a four-alarm fire at a lumberyard near the Ship Canal in Queen Anne. During that incident, almost all Seattle Fire Department resources were on the scene, and Chief Scoggins was able to call on partnering jurisdictions to have some of their trucks and firefighters backfill in neighborhoods throughout Seattle and respond to the various other 911 calls so that the Fire Department could address the four-alarm fire. The Fire Chief has been in discussions with the other 29 jurisdictions on this agreement for the past year, and this new ILA would supersede existing automatic or mutual aid agreements that have been in effect between these fire agencies. And the committee, by unanimous vote, recommends that the full council adopt Council Bill 119431.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Bagshaw.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Herbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Harrell.
Aye.
Six in favor and none opposed.
The bill passed and the chair will sign it. Please read Items 27 through 37.
Agenda Items 27 through 37, Appointments 1214 through 1224. The Appointments of Mackenzie Chase, Erin Acuno, Rachel L. Stewart as Members, Families, Education, Preschool, and Promise Levy Oversight Committee for terms to December 31, 2019. The Appointments of Stephen Blanford, Nicole Grant, excuse me, Stephen Blanford, Nicole Grant, Kimberly Walker, Greg Wong as Members, Families, Education, Preschool, and Promise Levy Oversight Committee for a Term to December 31, 2020, and the Appointments of Phyllis Campano, Trish M. DeZico, Donald T. Felder, and Constance W. Rice as Members, Families, Education, Preschool, and Promise Levy Oversight Committee for terms to December 31, 2021. The committee recommends the appointments be confirmed.
Very good. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. I will say just a few brief remarks about each one of these individuals. Mackenzie Chase is a mayoral appointment. Mackenzie is the Government Relations Manager for Save the Children Action Network. She works to expand access to high-quality, early education, and care for children in Washington through state and local advocacy. She's been a tireless advocate for early learning, especially the Seattle Preschool Program and other statewide early learning efforts. Erin Acuno is a council appointment. She is the executive director of the Southeast Seattle Education Coalition, a coalition of community-based organizations, schools, educators, community leaders, parents, and caregivers, and concerned Southeast Seattle residents working to improve education for all children, especially those in Southeast Seattle and those farthest away from opportunities. Rachel Stewart, also a council nominee. She has served institutions of higher education since 2001, and during that time has sought to increase access to opportunities for marginalized groups by leveraging campus resources to benefit the campus and community. She currently works in a leadership position at the Seattle Housing Authority and formerly worked as a deputy director at the Seattle University Center for Community Engagement. Next, we have Stefan Blanford, a mayoral appointment. He holds a master's degree in public administration from the Evans School of Public Policy and Governance and a doctorate in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from the College of Education, both on the University of Washington campus. He has led several education and youth development nonprofit organizations and currently serves as Board Director for United Way of King County, and in 2013, served as a member of the Seattle School Board. Next is Nicole Grant. She is also a nominee by the mayor. She is the Executive Secretary, Treasurer of the Martin Luther King County Labor Council in Seattle. She, prior to that, was the Executive Director at Certified Electrical Workers of Washington from 2000 to 2019. Next, we have Kimberly Walker, a council appointment. She is the Senior Manager for Partnerships and Collaborations at SOAR. Her experiences span from early learning to gerontology. With a heartfelt commitment to the needs of families, Kimberly's mission is to connect with and empower communities to uplift their voice and lead the change they want to see. She is also the only nominee we have that is able to say that she holds the title of Pullman Idol. She won a singing competition in Pullman at Washington State University. Greg Wong, also a council appointee. He serves as legal counsel to a diverse group of public, private, and not-for-profit clients. He specializes in complex issues, often ones that impact people's lives in the Pacific Northwest. As a litigator and appellate attorney, he's been successful at all levels of our judicial system. He provides strategic and general counsel in various areas, including education policy and issues related to the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act and Washington's Public Records Act. He's been a longtime advocate of universal preschool programs and has been a prior longstanding member of the Levy Oversight Committee, and we're happy to have his continued participation on this oversight committee. Next, we have Phyllis Campano. She is also a council appointee. She began teaching in Washington State as a special education teacher in 2001. Before that, she taught in Massachusetts and has also been a longtime advocate of public education as the Vice President of the Seattle Education Association, and she is currently serving as the President of the Seattle Education Association, happy to continue to have her serve on the Oversight Committee. Next, we have mayoral appointee Trish DeZico. She co-founded TAF, which I think stands for the Technology Access Foundation, in 1996 after spending 15 years as a developer, designer, and manager in the high-tech industry. She is excited about bringing to bear to the committee how we can do better RFP processes and how we can best support STEM education, particularly for those who don't historically have access to those programs. Donald Felder spent 30 years with the Seattle Public Schools as a teacher-principal with Casey Family Programs, managed services for vulnerable families for 10 years. And, excuse me, he's a council appointee. He has, over his 40 years of experience in education, has worked in social work, mental health, and coaching, and has specifically worked with small schools to educate all students while championing children's services throughout Martin Luther King County. Next, we have Dr. Constance Rice, a mayoral appointee. She is the president of the Very Strategic Group, a consulting firm for executive coaching and collaborative solutions. She was formerly the Senior Executive Fellow for Casey Family Programs, which is the nation's largest operating foundation focused on safely reducing the need for foster care and building communities of hope for children and families across America. And we have a couple of last vacancies left that will be filled, but for now, this is up for consideration, and the committee recommended that these appointments be confirmed.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez. Again, the who's who on this group, and I know a lot of them personally, and what a fine group of candidates. Any questions? Councilmember Herbold.
I do have a question. I'm taking a look at the roster and see that six of the 17 have an NA next to their council district. What is, what are the circumstances under which we would not be noting the resident location of the member?
That could be just a typographical error, to be honest. It might just be, well, some of the NAs are like for myself and for Mayor Durkin, for example.
Good point.
And then the other two are for Superintendent Denise Juno and school board member Richard Burke. And so I can see that there's at least one, two, two of the appointments that I can see that don't have districts designated, but their applications up top on the first page indicate where their residential neighborhood is.
Got it.
If I may, I think the big difference there was that the ordinance that was adopted by the voters gave those four specific individuals specific seats on the Oversight Committee without needing to be appointed.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good question.
Any other questions or comments? If not, those in favor of confirming the appointments, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries and the appointments are confirmed. I think that takes us to the end of our agenda, and so we should revisit the discussion we had on, I think it was Agenda Item Number 3, Council Bill 19425. So it's come to my attention that it would be inconsistent with our charter rules to actually take a vote on it today. The motion to reconsider was properly made and seconded, but we, as a full council, should not vote on it again today. We can vote on it and reconsider it at a next properly scheduled full council meeting, which then gives us two options, as I see it. One would be January 7 of 2019, and the other one would be at a special full council meeting, properly noted, which would require 24-hour notice at a minimum. I've also been told that any time tomorrow doesn't work from a logistical standpoint based on the availability of clerks, which would mean we possibly could have it Wednesday if, in fact, we can have a full council meeting. So my plan at this point is not to talk to any of you collectively, but to figure out whether, to talk to you individually to the extent I talk to you at all, but to figure out whether a select, a special meeting makes sense or waiting till January 7. I have also been told, all while I've been sitting here, by the way, just whispers, no, I'm just kidding, I was told, working with central staff when I've gotten up, that it's fairly time-sensitive to have this legislation voted on this year. So that's sort of the hand that we have. So that's all the information I've gotten from central staff in the last 20 minutes. Questions? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes. Council President, if this were to come before the full council, again, at a special meeting of the full council later this week, I think part of the reason we're in this pickle is because we just have low attendance. So I don't know if the attendance issues will be resolved by the time that you intend to note a special meeting. For what it's worth, I personally will be out of the office on Wednesday and half the day on Thursday, so maybe that helps you.
That does help me.
In this instance.
Well, it's incredibly helpful because Wednesday was actually problematic for me as well, but we just need at least.
Maybe Friday.
Well, Friday was, now you're really.
I mean, we still need, I guess I still haven't heard if the attendance issues are resolved, because if it's this panel that is going to be attending on Friday, I'm not sure that your votes change.
So, so I think that I do not have to decide today at this moment, let me make this clear.
Don't.
I don't have to decide right now when the motion to, the date for the motion to reconsider. I do not have to decide that now. Okay. Is that clear to everyone? I lost my, so I don't have to announce.
Counselor.
Right. So it has to be our next full council meeting, but I don't have to decide now when that full council meeting will be, so we don't have to start shouting out availability on the fly here. So the plan is to find out when we can meet as a full council, properly noted, have an open and transparent discussion on this issue, and see how we can meet our budget requirements as well.
Great.
Okay. I seem to be confusing.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we're having a sidebar over here about the council rules, and it was our understanding that if the prevailing party on the motion, which would be the no votes on this council bill, if we move to reconsider, then it would comply with all of whatever laws and rules we need to comply with. And I see that Mr. Slaton is working his way up to the microphone to advise us of that.
So unless there's objection, I'm going to suspend the rules and hear some procedural advice from someone to help us out with process here. Please identify yourself and help us out.
My name is Jeff Slaton, Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office. Ordinarily, for most of your motions and your actions, what you just said, Councilwoman Gonzalez, would be true. However, if it's, if a council bill fails and there's a motion for reconsideration, the charter requires that the motion on the reconsideration can't be voted on until the next council meeting. So it's not something you have the ability to suspend.
Isn't that what I just said?
You referenced the charter. I don't, I didn't catch the detail of what the problem was with the charter. There is also a provision in the charter, so G subsection 4, that says that, I guess it's a motion to amend, not the substantive motion.
Such that the prevailing party might have had some flexibility, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Correct. I was just looking for an opportunity for the prevailing party to have, an opportunity to allow for the underlying bill to be considered today without the sticking point grant.
The charter requires the prevailing party to be the only one that can move for reconsideration, and even so, it says, for whatever reasons, that it couldn't be done at the same meeting. It has to be done at the next meeting.
Okay, so we're right back to where I thought we were going to be. So let's just be clear. We will try to schedule a special meeting, or we will take this up at our next full council meeting on January 7. And however we do it, we'll properly note it and make sure that the public is aware of what we're doing. And as we stand, the bill has failed. Councilmember Bagshaw.
Thank you, and I just want to underscore, Council President, to you and my colleagues, that we have received essentially an SOS from the Budget Office saying this has to be passed by December 31 of this year in order to make monies available to be paid by the end of this quarter. So it's not as easy as saying, we'll take it up in January.
I thought I said that, too.
Just want to underscore.
I heard you say that, Council President. I just, I just want, if I can just close really quickly before we move on to other business, and I have a couple of items of other business. So I just, I just want to say that this is an action that I took. I voted no on this, in part thinking that this was not going to be very controversial, and so I want to apologize. and so I want to apologize to the Chair. I had communicated to Chair Bagshaw that I intended to vote in this manner as a courtesy, with the understanding that there would likely be support for the underlying bill. So I did not intend to derail today's committee hearing in this fashion, so, but I appreciate that this needs to get done before the end of the year, and hope that we can find a path forward to appropriately separate these issues and/or address the reality of the council attendance issues to allow for more council members to be present to consider the underlying bill. Thank you.
So before I moved on to any other business, I actually, while it seemed a little clumsy, I actually welcomed the conversation, and I'll say exactly why, that I think it's good for the public to know that we actually are moved by what each other says, that we don't have a script on how we're going to vote, either with our heart or our head, and we try to use the rules to, in a way that makes sense, but also allows some flexibility. So I'm not even slightly, maybe slightly irritated that I could have done something, but in all seriousness, this is the process, and it's a good process. So, fine, we'll figure it out and keep the discussion, but I think we all understand your position, Councilmember Gonzalez. So having said that, let's just move on. So is there any other further business coming for the council? Councilwoman Gonzalez.
I move to be excused on January 7 and January 14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, the Councilmember Gonzalez be excused from January 7 and January 14. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Any other business coming for the council? If not, we stand adjourned, and everyone have a great rest of the afternoon.